Good afternoon. I'm going to share my screen. In the meantime, do we have any members of the public present? So can we let them into the room?
We have some members coming and it's like we're sitting in voice.
Great.
We will think about in it for thirty seconds.
And I'll start sharing my screen. Can everyone see clearly? Great. In that case, we're going to get started and I'm going to briefly introduce myself. My name is Noel Pfeffer. I serve as Executive Director of the Community Development Administration. And I'm joined today by Miriam Keller, City Planning Executive with the Planning Department and Dylan Holium, City Housing Strategist with the St. Louis Development Corporation. And they have really led the drafting of the Pro Housing Grant Application, which was published for public comment a few weeks ago, in which we will be going over today. So an overview for today's meeting, we're going to start just by talking about the Pro Housing Grant itself, its eligible uses and the process. We're going to move on to talk about our proposal and the context that has informed our approach and what we are proposing, the programs we're proposing. And then finally, we're going to take public comment and questions. So the pathways to remove, the pathways to removing obstacles to housing grant program was established in the 2023 Consolidated Appropriations Act, which appropriated $85 million to HUD to establish this program designed to remove obstacles to affordable housing. It is rooted in the CDBG statutory and regulatory framework, which means that it, all activities funded under this must meet one of three national objectives. Supporting low to moderate income individuals, eliminating slum and blight, and responding to an urgent need. But within that, more specifically, the notice of funding opportunity details a range of eligible activities in which HUD gives us a clearer idea of what they want us to do with these funds, and they fall into four buckets. Planning and policy, development, preservation, and investment in infrastructure. Within these buckets, there's a lot of specific proposals that HUD includes, including updates to your zoning code, including kind of pre-approval by right permitting procedures, affordable housing incentive programs and others. And we feel that what we are proposing really responds to the uses that HUD has detailed in the notice of funding opportunity. The grant period will be from anticipated award date of January 2024, early 2024 through September 2029. And HUD anticipates awarding up to 20 awards between $1 and $10 million. And as you'll see today, we are proposing an array of programs that sum to the full $10 million. Next, one key element of the Pro Housing Grant is public participation and stakeholder and citizen engagement. And that's why we're holding this public hearing now in advance of our submitting the grant and why we went through over 15-day public notice period, publishing in the American and Post-Dispatch and are holding this hearing today to take additional comments and public input. We will respond, we will take that comment under advisement and update our application accordingly before submitting the final application before November 6th. But we also want to note that this engagement really exists in a broader context of engagement that the city of St. Louis, under Mayor Jones's leadership, is committed to. And that's really understanding that those closest to the problem are closest to the solution. And we want to have community-driven policies and priorities. And so that's why the administration has set up consistently a stimulus advisory board, a youth council, a reparations commission, an LGBTQIA advisory board, all to inform the work that we do. And it is worth noting that each of these entities has highlighted housing as one of the matters of greatest concern in their work. We know that youth, a third of SLPS students are unhoused at some point in their SLPS career. We know that LGBTQIA individuals in our community face barriers to accessing affordable housing that others don't. We know that equal access to housing is a form of reparations. And we also know that we have a unique opportunity right now to invest, make a historic investment in affordable housing, in part due to stimulus funds, state and local fiscal relief funds. And so we've been doing this engagement and as part of it, we've held public hearings and town halls. Every notice of funding availability that CDA issues is accompanied by public hearings. Again, the mayor's office has held a series of town halls across the city. And we have also issued surveys, including an EJAP Economic Justice Action Plan Prioritization Survey that received over 500 responses and an ARPA Community Need Survey that received over 5,000 responses. And what we see consistently in the surveys and in the input that we hear is that housing is a priority for our community. And in fact, if you look at those responses to that ARPA Community Need Survey, we see housing pop up over and over again in different contexts. Neighborhood transformation, which includes investments in affordable housing, emerged as the top priority for city residents. But also, house investing in the unhoused emerged as the top priority under the household relief measure and providing access to homeownership emerges as a top priority within the economic empowerment category. And so we see housing emerging over and over again. With respect to engagement specific to this proposal, we have engaged with the Urban Land Institute, the Community Builders Network, Invest St. Louis, the Building Energy Exchange, St. Louis Realtors, among others. We've also engaged with developers like Baderat, Rubicon, and public entities, including ByState, East West Gateway, the mayor's office, and others. And critically, engagement and dialogue around this grant is not going to end with this hearing. It's really going to be an ongoing dialogue with the community. And a lot of the activities that we are proposing involve deeper engagement with the community, including the Strategic Land Use Plan, the 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Planning Process, which we are going into at CDA now, and Ongoing Action Plan. So what informed our proposal? There have been an array of studies that speak to the need to invest in affordable housing. And one of the seminal foundations for our work is segregation in St. Louis, dismantling the divide, which speaks to the fact that generations of redlining of restrictive covenants, of appraisal gaps, of highways and white flight, have all segregated St. Louis and resulted in profoundly unequal access to affordable housing. We also look to the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan, which is the five-year plan that HUD requires the city to put together and which established our housing goals that we are currently in. And then we also look to a regional affordable housing report card, which unfortunately found that in many areas, St. Louis was scoring very low, actually an F in terms of access, equitable access to affordable housing. At the core, of course, of our work is the Economic Justice Action Plan, which calls on us to deploy this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with federal funds to empower, develop, and transform our city. And what we mean by that is that investments need to be made, not just into the built environment, not just into the housing stock, but also into people. That investments into neighborhoods need to involve economic empowerment investments into youth, into workforce development, into entrepreneurship, as well as development investment into infrastructure, into access to digital, to Wi-Fi and digital equity, into access to transit, and into neighborhood transformation activities itself, and transforming our vacant properties from liabilities into assets. And then finally, we will be releasing in the coming weeks, our City of St. Louis Affordable Housing Report, which includes a lot of data, including some of the tables here below, and really shows the magnitude of the challenge that we are facing. And it really, I like to think about it in terms of three distinct prongs. There's the 37,000 or 36,500 cost burdened tenants who collectively pay $170 million more in rent that they can afford. And that's just an invisible crisis of lost wealth. But within that, there's a community of about 20,000 tenants who make less than 30% AMI, whose income is very low, if existent at all, and who bear the brunt of that cost burden and who are extraordinarily housing insecure, who are living at risk of eviction on a day-to-day basis and who really are then the folks who, when we look at our point in time count, which finds that we have about 1,200 unhoused individuals, a few hundred of whom are chronically unhoused, that's the community that is cycling in and out of homelessness and who we have to be particularly focused on. But then on the other side of the spectrum, we also see that there are about 15,000 cost burdened homeowners who also collectively pay $75 million more than they can afford towards mortgages, utilities, and property taxes each year. And that's not even counting the maintenance costs of owning a home. And so we know that as we seek to preserve the fabric of our neighborhoods and as we seek to expand access to wealth building and as we seek frankly to grow the city's population, we need to invest in this community as well. Because though between 2010 and 2020, the city of St. Louis lost 17,000 individuals. Now, we lost 27,000 black families, primarily who are looking for homeownership opportunities outside the city. So what work are we building on? First and foremost, in response to all this engagement, in response to the clear call from the community for investments into housing, the city has made unprecedented investments allocating over $250 million towards housing justice. And this is across an array of programs, which can kind of conceptually be bracketed into six categories, which I include here on the left. The first is rental and utility assistance, again focusing on the eviction crisis, focusing on those housing unstable individuals where we've allocated over $20 million. In addition, however, we know we need to invest to expand the continuum of care and expand access to shelter, tiny homes, bridge, and rapid rehousing, and permanent supportive housing. And so you see commitments in the Department of Human Services, which has been appropriated, $8 million for emergency shelter, $5 million for emergency housing, and $13 million for housing stabilization. You also see these commitments at CDA where we have $10.6 million set aside for permanent supportive housing, much of which will be going out in our February NOFA, although $1.3 million is already committed to a motel acquisition project and in the Affordable Housing Commission, which is supporting, providing support with tiny homes, emergency shelter, and transitional housing, among other programs. Then we have over $107 million dedicated towards affordable housing production and preservation. And I will go over some of those details in the next slide. But I'll just speak at a high level about those three remaining categories. One is vacant building stabilization, and that $45 million is made up of $35 million of proposition NS neighborhood stabilization funds for the stabilization of LRA properties for residential use. And another $13 million is made up of ARPA funds that sit in the building division and that are being deployed to stabilize privately owned vacant buildings. And those funds, while they're not creating housing directly, they are stabilizing the buildings and preparing them for a rehab grant or for a private owner to come in and develop them. In addition, we've dramatically expanded our investment in home repair. Traditionally, $2 million a year in HUD funding, we've dedicated $15 million in ARPA funds to it. And as a result, have roughly doubled the program. Last year, we completed repairs on 155 homes. This year, to date, we are at 282 homes and hope to hit 300 by the end of the year. And this is in part due to the recruitment with SLDC, with the mayor's office, and others of over 20 additional contractors to our team. We've also made investments in homeownership assistance, including towards down payment assistance, which SLDC is leading and will be releasing that, those funds in the coming months, as well as to mortgage assistance and real estate property tax relief, where the Department of Human Services has already saved over 100 homes from foreclosure in partnership with Legal Services of Eastern Missouri and Park Central Development and the Collector of Revenue. Moving down, here you see I spoke about $107 million committed towards the production of affordable housing. This table really summarizes our housing development pipeline. And you'll see it includes a total of 2,700 units, of which 395 have been completed since 2022, 571 are presently under construction, and 1,779 are in the pre-development stage. And you'll see also that these housing production projects represent a suite of projects as diverse as our city, ranging from permanent supportive housing to 30% AMI to address those who are most housing unstable and including over 600 units under 30% AMI, but also including over about 200 for sale homes and then over, and then over 1,000 under 60% AMI, as well as a fair number of market rate units, because we understand the importance of investing in mixed income communities. And those are ultimately the healthiest communities. And you can see here a map of where these investments have been driven. And you can see that it really is aligned along two, two aligned axes, which involves economic justice priority tracks, which we measure in terms of life expectancy, in terms of violent crime rates, in terms of educational attainment, poverty levels, and access to internet, but also in terms of community assets, because we want to invest along nodes of strength for maximum catalytic impact. And so we invest near schools, we invest near parks, along transit, and other community assets. And with that, I've been talking a lot, so I'm going to toss it now to Miriam to talk about more of the work that we're building on.
Unprecedented levels of investment and affordable housing that are underway right now. So incredible momentum in that dimension. But we also see that there have been and continue to be a lot of work on some really tough policy changes. So going back, you know, several years, really, putting in place protections for source of income. So that means that it is no longer legal in the city of St. Louis to discriminate against a prospective renter if they're using a housing choice voucher, for example. So it really an important step forward there. And more recently, a lot of, you know, policy changes just passed within the last session or two. So tenant right to counsel, ensuring that any renter served with an eviction notice has a broader right to legal representation that can protect them from that eviction or negotiate a sort of better path out of what could otherwise be the situation that puts them at very high risk of homelessness and housing insecurity more generally. Recently, the Board of Alderman just passed short-term rental regulation. So two bills that in effect put in place, you know, a very important regulatory framework to ensure that short-term rentals are operated in a safe way and also that they don't, as much as they have been, compete with, you know, our longer-term rentals and people that need affordable housing in our community. So those are things that have happened and we see work underway at the Board of Alderman on other bills. So tenant right to repair, a good cause eviction ordinance or bill being considered. And also, two bills in tandem, looking to reduce barriers to special residential uses. So shelters and other housing types in our community that meet the housing needs of, you know, many community members who are inadequately served by other types of housing. Next slide, please.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you for that. Miriam, appreciate that. Along with our funding investments and our policy changes, we continue, we want to continue to expand our capacity for intentional collaboration with community partners, with emerging developers alongside the community. And so that's one large-scale investment. One of the large, excuse me, one of the large-scale investments we want to support is our Project Connect Neighborhood. This began as a City of St. Louis initiative spearheaded by SLDC to understand the potential benefits of the government investment of the NGA facility, the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency, excuse me. This, we explored this to understand the impacts this facility would have on the broader community and its effect on the six neighborhoods in which it touches. And what, what it transformed into is it allowed us to create planning, planning efforts, to structure planning efforts with these communities to facilitate growth going forward in the future. And so Project Connect, as it touches JBL, Carr Square, Columbus Square, and Hyde Park, we want to continue to work with SLDC, the City of St. Louis Planning and Urban Design Agency, to create neighborhood plans that will guide future neighborhood growth. So I guess I'll turn it back to Miriam to share about some of our strategic land use plans and our plan STL Neighborhood Planning Initiative work.
Yes, Dylan just shared some of the planning work underway in the Project Connect Neighborhoods. We're also just, just now, as a city, embarking on an update to our strategic land use plan. So this will be sort of a holistic overhaul, if you will, of the land use component of our comprehensive plan, a document that sets a sort of forward-looking, long-term vision for how our city evolves into the future. At the same time, PDA is launching a neighborhood planning initiative. So over time, developing neighborhood plans for each of the city's 79 neighborhoods in clusters, you know, two and three at a time, but with the goal of making sure that communities, residents at the very initial level are part of the conversation and defining what they would like to see and guiding development in their community. Next slide, please. So a lot of planning work underway and a lot of federal investments that we are planning around as well. So Dylan just described the, the planning work around the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency. You can see that marked on number, as number two on the slide. Number three is the planned expansion of the Veterans Administration Hospital and other incredible investment in our community by the federal government that we are hoping to build off of through these neighborhood planning, community planning investments. Also shown here are the Economic Justice Action Plan demonstration areas. You can see how those, you know, in many cases, really build off of these places that are receiving investment. In green, you can see as well the Brickline, which has already received, I believe it's $19 million in funding through the Raise Grant Program to begin implementation of that really ambitious vision for expanding mobility and mobility choice in our neighborhood. And then finally here, a final sort of proposed or planned hopeful federal investment and expanding the north-south or creating a north-south metro link line to expand transit access for the first time in our city's history to neighborhoods on the north side and our south side. So reconnecting neighborhoods through the major investments in transit, a hopeful additional source of partnership there with the federal government in promoting economic justice in our city. Next slide.
Thank you, Miriam. And we'll turn now, the grant is titled Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing. So as we turn to our specific proposals, we started with identifying barriers. And the top barriers from a strategic implementation perspective, and I'll note that you will see this triptych of strategic implementation, zoning and land use policy, and capacity and communication for the remainder of the presentation. And I and CDA are leading strategic implementation work, and I'll present on those. The Planning Department is leading the zoning and land use policy work. And SLDC is leading our investments into capacity and communication. And Dylan will cover those areas as well. But on the strategic implementation front, we've seen enormous barriers, obviously, with COVID, with high interest rates. We've seen extreme inflation of construction costs driven by labor shortages and supply chain shortages. And that's why one of the key areas that, that we know we need to invest in as we work to expand our investment in housing and transform our 10,000 vacant buildings from liabilities into assets is investing in developer and contractor capacity, which is why the city is investing in Build St. Louis and trying to use the work that we are investing in, in terms of home repair, minor home repair in particular, in terms of lot maintenance, as a opportunity to create a pipeline by which we grow contractor and developer capacity. We incubate small MWBE developers in particular, and we help contractors build skills, especially young people in partnership with Rankin and our unions and various other partners. A second barrier that we've seen extremely concretely here in the city is unpredictability in terms of site preparation. And that's because we are an urban geography. We have a long history of hundreds of years of construction and development and demolition. And to name just one example, in a project a few years ago, which we funded for the development of affordable housing, we ultimately had to rescind the award because they found, when they started digging, there was a church buried on the lot, on the lot, on the site. And so we know that this can create real challenges. And it's one of the things that we hope to address with this proposal. In addition, we do struggle with inflexible affordability policies. Right now, it's really one size fits all with our for-sale housing affordability policies. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a future slide. And then we also know that property management models are not particularly sustainable right now in this market and really are not designed to be sustainable for affordable rental housing. And that's why we see that of the portfolio of about 12,000 light tech units in the city of St. Louis, over 1,500 of them are currently vacant. And it's because those landlords and managers are not able to keep up with maintenance, are not able to turn units, which typically involves an investment of $5,000 to $20,000. And this really, we believe, could be one of the best ways to create a lot, or expand the supply of affordable housing quickly in St. Louis. And then finally, we see barriers to energy efficiency, in particular in light of our historic housing stock, which is an asset in so many ways. Many of these older buildings are not designed for energy efficiency and thus need to be converted and need to be improved in order to fit modern demands. And with that, I'll turn it over to Miriam.
And so the second category here is zoning and land use policy barriers. I'm going to speak to these three interrelated issues. Our zoning code, for one, is really riddled with barriers to housing and housing affordability. Things like minimum lot sizes, density of population maximums, parking requirements, all really constrain what can be done in expanding our housing supply and makes it particularly difficult to develop more affordable housing types in our city. We have a lot of things that we, we know we need to work on there. Work is already underway on, on many of them, but our zoning code as a whole hasn't been comprehensively reviewed really since 1950. And so I think the feeling is an overhaul of our code is really long past due and presents some of the greatest opportunities for expanding that housing supply, housing diversity in our city. The sort of inadequacies and challenges of our code have led us to a situation where we're really over-reliant on variances from our code as a way of permitting development. Actually, in many cases, it's exactly the development we want. It's that dense urban development that is not currently permitted by right by our code. But relying on variances in this process creates a situation where there's just way more unpredictability and discretion in these permitting processes than, than we need to have. We think that updating our code to be really supportive of housing diversity and housing affordability will make it so those investments and those types of developments can happen in a manner that is just highly predictable, more efficient, fewer delays in the process, all, all without additional money necessarily, right? Just updating the process to support the types of housing that we know our community needs. Now, third category here touches on something that Noel alluded to, which is our local historic district regulations. We have absolutely a priority as a city of preserving the historic character of our built environment. And because of that priority, over the decades, communities have put into place many different historic districts of different kinds. One kind, local historic districts. That there are 18 of these across the city that, in each geography, in different ways, puts, puts forward standards for new construction and for rehabilitation that protect the historic character of our neighborhoods, really valuable tools. But difference, these, you know, 18 different standards, they have different definitions, they're structured differently. But difference, these, you know, eighteen different standards, they have different definitions, they're structured different ways. People hoping to invest in their homes or to build new housing in communities may not be aware of these standards until if they submit a permit that is null with denial. And then again, they have to spend that additional time, sometimes additional cost, coming into compliance or seeking a variance from or exception from those regulations. And so we see this as another opportunity to sort of make sure that our regulations and and standards and rules balance the priorities that we have as a city and allow for more efficient processes.
And the last pillar of the barriers that remain will be the capacity and communication barriers. And this really speaks to the work, the carrying out of this work, this strategic implementation, the zoning and land use policy. We want to increase our capacity to implement the work, but also we want to be better with communicating how we facilitate development activities. And so the first way would be the community buy in. Excuse me, historically, we know, Miriam hinted at the discretionary approval processes, understanding zoning regulation, understanding terminology, having community buy in to not only develop for the community, but develop with the community and relinquish some of these jargon barriers and relinquish some of the opportunities for them to be involved in what goes on in their direct neighborhoods. And so we want to build the capacity and increase communication with this to further reach the community with the goals that they have for themselves and aligning that with our directives and our focus for producing and preserving affordable housing. But the second way we want to do this is, again, Noel hinted towards this and strategic implementation. What is our developer capacity? Again, we understand that big box developers don't always come into these neighborhoods to build as well as some of our smaller scale developers don't have the wherewithal or the contingency capacity within their funds or pro formas to execute projects that remain affordable for our residents. And so what we want to do is we want to continue to educate and build the local, small scale builder pipeline to facilitate the work that we want to accomplish with our with our strategic goals. Thirdly, we want to increase our interdepartmental coordination. As of right now, there are six agencies that facilitate affordable housing activities or development activities. What we want to do, what we see is the barriers of alignment in terms of everybody having specific priorities or goals or objectives, or even target geographies that they would like to focus on. And even if not, what we want to do is we'd like to catalyze this and move in such a way that it is integrated and that we are aligned and coordinated to facilitate this work. Lastly, with communication and capacity barriers that we've seen is the coordination between our city and our partners. What we want to do is not only align ourselves interdepartmentally as a city, but we'd like to coordinate well and align ourselves well with our stakeholders and partners that also serve within the housing ecosystem and can help us facilitate affordability for our for our for our neighborhoods. And so this levels out the barriers that we've seen throughout our exploration stage for this grant application.
Thank you, Miriam and Dylan. I think we have some extra slides here that we just went through. But now we'll turn to our proposal itself. And we'll go through each of these in turn. But you'll see again that at a high level, it's focused in three conceptual pillars, strategic implementation, zoning and land use and capacity and communication. So starting with strategic implementation, we have five programs that I'm about to go to through. The first is prioritizing vacant unit turns. And as I mentioned earlier, we do have over fifteen hundred vacant li tech units currently in the city. These are already rent restricted, but they're just not occupied and they're not occupiable for the most part due to a lack of access to five to twenty thousand dollars that it may take to bring in new flooring and cabinets, drywall, HVAC appliances and furnishings and ready a unit for a new tenant. We're already investing in this need, which is why in this latest CDBG cycle, we are allocating as part of our twenty twenty four action plan, two million dollars to the St. Louis Housing Authority to bring a hundred and twenty seven units online that would otherwise remain vacant. It is just one of the best bang for your buck, one of the most cost effective investments that you can make in affordable housing, because typically a new unit will take well over a hundred thousand dollars of investment, not necessarily from the city, but from some public source, if not much more. I'll add that if awarded, we do plan to allocate these funds through our February Housing Production NOFA, where we will set aside funds for vacant unit turns and invite applications from the city's development community. It won't be limited, by the way, to vacant li tech units. Other vacant units may apply, but they would, of course, need to commit to affordability restrictions as part of this program. And the other critical note that I'll make about this is that we will be scrutinizing applicants to ensure that they're responsible property managers. Because there is a potential here to to subsidize irresponsible property management if implemented incorrectly. And so please know that we're aware of that concern and therefore are going to be scrutinizing applications accordingly. But on the other hand, I'll add that there is a potential here to actually promote responsible management. Because right now, the the ownership model is very challenging, has very thin margins, if not negative margins in many cases. And therefore, funding these responsible property owners to activate their units actually brings in additional revenue, which they can in turn reinvest into property management and maintenance. The second project or proposed program is our site preparation fund. And this would be used for excavation, stabilization, environmental remediation and other needs as may arise to responsibly manage our own portfolio of properties and support projects that run into unexpected costs. I already gave the example of St. Henry Place, where a buried church resulted in a rescinded award. But it happens, luckily, we don't have to rescind very many awards, and we do include contingencies in our awards. But it does happen that a project eats up that contingency immediately thanks to high excavation costs, which can run up to fifty or sixty thousand dollars if there is often a full home that has been demolished and remains in the ground. It'll eat up that whole contingency and really either slow down a project or in some cases kill it. The other need that we have, though, is that we do have two hundred plus CDA properties, which have been purchased since nineteen eighty, many of which are currently deteriorating, and we need to be responsible property owners as well, which is why we are already investing CDBG funds into the stabilization of forty seven forty seven Penrose and four properties along Bremen and Hyde Park. And this would allow us to expand that that investment and commitment as well. So what we need is a, we want to establish an agreement with an excavation contractor that would work directly with CDA, and so we can deliver to when the when a property runs into this excavation issue, we can come in and solve for that. But we also want to purchase ground penetrating radar so that we can actually have an idea in advance of construction as to which properties are are going to run into these high costs and deliver a cleaner lot to them as well. That's the site preparation fund. Another critical priority is updating our affordability policies, in particular for for sale homes. Although I'll also note that we are in the process of updating our our deeds of trust on our rental properties as well to ensure that they comply with the Board of Alderman's latest legislation and protect the the fair housing rights of residents and tenants. But our for sale policy is really fascinating and important because essentially there's two principles that are in tension. And that is, on the one hand, wealth building and economic empowerment. And on the other hand, long term affordability and equity. And so we can see that by looking at our current policy. So our current policy essentially involves a loan agreement with between CDA and the developer and the promissory known dispersing agreements are kind of supplemental agreements. But the loan agreement i- is the essential component, which forgives the CDA loan, it requires, it fills the gap. I'm getting into too much detail here, but essentially say that there's a property that is costs three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to construct and it will be sold at an affordable price for a hundred and fifty thousand, will cover the gap of two hundred thousand roughly, or it might be less. It'll usually be less. But we forgive that loan upon sale to a low to moderate income homeowner. And then there's no further obligation, no further commitment on the part of the developer. The homeowner, on the other hand, also has a deed of trust and a land use restriction agreement. But the way that these work is that the only restriction on the on the new homeowner is that if they choose to resell the property within five years, they'll have to pay back a fraction discounted prorata of their down payment assistance. So in practice, what this means is that we spend three hundred, let's say, we spend three hundred thousand dollars to build a home, of which a hundred and fifty thousand is CDA gap subsidy. And then the homeowner purchases the home for a hundred and fifty thousand. But if it's in a neighborhood like Benton Park West or another neighborhood with relatively high property values, that homeowner can turn around and sell the property for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year. And they'll have to pay back four thousand, maybe five thousand dollars in down payment assistance. And so the incentive there is for that homeowner to sell. And that's great for wealth building. It's not a terrible thing, but it is terrible for preserving long term affordability in that neighborhood. Because we know that there are neighborhoods in the city which are appreciating rapidly. And if we don't take affirmative steps to secure long term affordability, we'll quickly lose any affordable housing. And the city also has an interest in promoting mixed income communities and preserving access to affordable housing in every community. So we have these two policies in tension. And let me be clear, the current policy works very well in neighborhoods with lower property values. We are not looking at eliminating the current policy altogether. What we really need and what this work seeks to do is to create a spectrum of affordability policies that fit each neighborhood according to their need and their market value analysis. And these alternatives could include an expanded recapture basis to strongly disincentivize resale, which we could do by requiring payback not just of down payment assistance, but also of the CDA gap subsidy. And that's something that many other HUD jurisdictions do. Or we can look at more innovative solutions from an equity share model in which the city and the homeowner share in both the upside and downside risks of homeownership. Because we are equal investors in the project, with the city having put in a hundred and fifty thousand of gap subsidy and the homeowner having purchased the home for a hundred and fifty thousand. Or we can look into ground lease models, which can really be used to preserve long term or even permanent affordability with the city remaining the long term property owner and leasing the ground and selling the building to the homeowner. And now, let me be clear, that's not great from a wealth building perspective. And it would really be used as a stepping stone from rental, from from tenancy into homeownership, where in an ideal world, they could take the opportunity of owning the building, but not the land to build credit, build that record, and then ultimately graduate out into full homeownership. But there's a lot of options, and we want to develop this in dialogue with the public and the community, which is why we are seeking these funds to support some of the legal costs and the consulting costs and the technical costs of developing these models. But we're also already investing in updating our market value analysis and in developing our consolidated plan, which will be submitted to HUD on November fifteenth, twenty twenty four. And we look forward to continuing that conversation with the public over the coming year. Next, we have an energy smart program, a collaboration with the Planning and Urban Design Agency, and in particular with the Sustainability Division. This really builds on work that we've been doing with the Sustainability Team and with the Building Energy Exchange Council and with other partners across the state and country as part of the Solar for All Coalition. We actually were a part of two Solar for All coalitions where we applied to for funding to provide home repair services to homeowners. But one gap to install solar panels and to provide energy efficient upgrades to their homes. But one gap we saw in this work is supporting small landlords to make energy efficient investments in their properties, and in particular, small landlords of naturally occurring affordable housing. And so we're excited to partner with the Sustainability Team to administer this program, which would kind of be grafted onto our home repair program, which already has a lead remediation component as well as various other services that we provide. A similar program and another partnership with the Planning Department is similar in terms of that it would graft onto the existing home repair kind of capacity that we've built with our bench of over seventy contractors and strong partnership with the Building Division and and Mission St. Louis, among others, is piloting a program to assist low to moderate income homeowners with upgrades to their homes that are compliant with historic district standards. And that's because something that we've seen in particular in neighborhoods that have faced disinvestment like the Ville and Hyde Park is that a homeowner will want to upgrade their windows or 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 doors and then face increased costs as a result of local historic district regulations. This program would be designed to subsidize and potentially fully cover that 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 cost in order to reduce barriers to that compliance, preserve owner occupied housing, reduce displacement risks and promote investment in these historic neighborhoods by strengthening that housing stock. And that brings the strategic implementation component to a close. I will toss it now to Miriam. Zoning and land use regulation.
Great, thanks, Noel. So of course, it really hinted at a lot of the activities that we're proposing in this pillar when I was discussing the barriers, but want to talk about them in a little bit more detail now. Next slide, please. So the first element here is that zoning code overhaul I described before. So like I mentioned, this hasn't happened since nineteen fifty. A lot has changed, and we have a lot of new goals, priorities, just realities as a city about the type of development and housing development in particular, in particular, that we would like to do. This is really great timing because we are in the process right now of updating our strategic land use plan as an element of our comprehensive plan. So the the role of the strategic land use plan is to really set a vision and goals for land use and kind of housing types and housing diversity as an opponent of land use. So that the land use plan kind of set the goals and what the zoning code overhaul would do is institutionalize those goals in our land use regulation, of which zoning is really a core tool. So what would this process include? There would just have to be a lot of outreach and education and engagement. Of course, we're doing a lot of that in the strategic land use plan process, but zoning conversations are tough. And so we want to keep the conversation going in this process. There would be a real focus on these questions of housing, of course. This is being framed as a pro housing zoning code overhaul. So a real focus on removing those barriers to and promoting diverse housing types and mixed income housing. There are lots of tools to explore, so, you know, expanding what we allow by right in different zoning districts, so making it a little bit easier to build the types of things that actually already exist in a lot of neighborhoods in our cities. So duplexes for families, really just trying to identify and eliminate the barriers to making sure that our diverse housing stock can be expanded on and preserved, really. Parking requirements can be a major barrier to housing investment and preservation. So that's a tool, absolutely, that will be explored in this process. And then different types of overlay tools that the SOTOD refers to transit oriented development overlays, which we can and should consider around our existing metro link stations and also those proposed future metro link stations on the north side, south side, metro link expansion. I think it's even appropriate to think about how can we promote dense, mixed income housing, including things that contribute to walkability. including things that contribute to walkability. So you have ground floor retail, things like that, that also promote transit use. I think it makes sense to think about those things as well around the brick line. So thinking about those overlay tools that have sort of specific regulations and possibilities around these major mobility investments that we're making and thinking about that, by the way, in the context of our incentive tools as well. Next slide, please. So that's one, one piece of what we want to do in this land use and regulation update category. The second is an update to those historic district standards I described before. So of course, these are administered by the Cultural Resources Office of the Planning and Urban Design Agency. They are truly the historic preservation experts that know the ins and outs and frustrations of all of the local historic district regulations that exist today. So all eighteen, right, in those different neighborhoods across our city. So they, as a team, will be working on updating, clarifying and simplifying definitions and requirements that exist within those. So things like, you know, windows, roofing materials, those things that Noel alluded to. With a goal of really balancing priorities of, you know, housing supply and housing affordability. Of course, historic preservation, really one of their main reasons for existing. And even thinking about things like climate resilience. So are there ways that energy efficiency improvements or installation of solar on roofs or other renewable energy systems? Are there ways that those things could be simplified or enabled or supported through these updated regulations? And of course, this process as well would include significant stakeholder and neighborhood engagement. You know, all these districts, by the way, were put in place in partnership. And, you know, in many cases decades ago with neighborhood associations and other community based stakeholders. Any change to them ought to be rooted in that same partnership. So the request is for funds to support that work and that outreach engagement to help accelerate the work that is already underway through the Culture Resources Office. Next slide, please. And then a third piece here is really a complement to those other updates to our land use regulation. And this is this Affordable Housing Design Book. So once we fix some of the underlying and systemic barriers to the types of housing development that we know we need and that we would like to see. We want to explore creating a library of, you can even think of them as like preapproved designs and floor plans and other resources to create and showcase affordable housing types that you know, that may not be top of mind for a lot of people doing development in our city. But this library of designs is meant to really foreground some of the housing types that we know we need. So things like duplexes, even considering modular and prefabricated construction, showing how renewables and our energy efficiency features can be integrated, even landscaping strategies that can help reduce energy burdens by providing shade in, in our hot, hot summers. So a process would include review across departments, right? There are a lot of people at the city who play a hand in review and compliance in development. We want to make sure everybody's engaged, but equally as important is working with stakeholders and the community to make sure that the designs that are included in this really that be community goals, so very much a two lane process. But the deliverable itself would be a like detailed visualization of those housing types and housing systems. Not just new construction, I want to stress also renovation approaches that encourage these features because we know we need to preserve the housing we have as much as we need to build more of it. And our request is for funds to hire a, a team involving certainly architectural support, but also some of that engagement and outreach support. And this would be a really a cross departmental, departmental partnership sort of facilitated by the Planning and Urban Design Agency, but far from exclusively involving us, involving partners at the Building Division, Community Development Administration, Affordable Housing Commission and Sanless Development Corporation. Excellent.
Thanks, Miriam. Again, to kind of round out our proposed activities, again, the last piece is to expand capacity and improve communication. And we want to continue to fortify support for undeserved, underserved communities and support equitable community development by ensuring access to and increase the production of affordable housing. And we want to do that through two ways. And the first way is to support ongoing action planning of for affordable housing. And then secondly, we want to support new positions to support engagement, planning, technical assistance and administration. And you'll see the, the forthcoming roles, how we want to do that. The first way is, we've touched on this multiple times before, but we want to continue to support the ongoing action planning that we're doing. The planning efforts, the planning efforts we completely understand are preemptive and need to happen before we can really do catalytic work within the city. And so again, supporting these planning initiatives, we want to continue to integrate ourselves, not only with the community, but support development opportunities. The strategic land use plan update, this land use element of the city's comprehensive plan really defines how we grow and how we change, how we change our future, how we change our future forecasting by focusing on affordability, equity and access. Secondly, the city, the city of St. Louis is launching a neighborhood planning initiative with the goal to reaching the seventy nine neighborhoods that Miriam spoke on earlier. And then lastly is the Project Connect, Project Connect Planning Initiative that we are in partnership with PD Planning and Development Association. And so I've talked about, we've briefly talked about each of these activities in a, in a small scale. But I think what we want to do is we want to continue to integrate ourselves by doing community focused work and also supporting positions that will allow us to do this at a higher capacity. And we want to do that through these forthcoming positions. The first way we want to do that is to bolster our neighborhood planning efforts. We want to build capacity and hire new, a new neighborhood planning person or administrating person to support the work that we're already doing. We want to help build capacity with PDA and support the neighborhood planning efforts. Secondly, with my role, we want to continue to extend my role to support and align our administrators to continue the work of housing development activities. The third position we want to support is the community engagement specialist, excuse me. This person will be housed in the planning and development, the PDA. And essentially what we want to do is we want to provide a structured role that will allow us to communicate with our communities and neighborhoods, our forthcoming zoning plans. And what this person will do will, that they will mitigate high level jargon, they will assist in zoning technical terms. They will help facilitate the community's understanding of how development, development will happen and how it will be informed by our forthcoming zoning zoning code overhaul and our strategic land use plan. And so this person will be the front, front standing entity for our communities so that they can understand what's happening and going forward. The fourth role we want to support is we want to increase small, we want to increase our capacity for those small scale and emerging developers, as well as those CDCs who are carrying forth the work of the housing development opportunities. The small scale developer liaison will mitigate some of the barriers associated with small scale development. Also, this person will assist in technical assistance to facilitate development opportunity going forward. The fifth way, we want to expand our capacity is through hiring our energy efficient program manager. We currently have one staff in PDA right now that handles energy efficiency, standard work in our, in that department. What we want to do is, as we are continuing to expand our implementation activities, we want to provide support with, with that program through an energy efficient program manager. The last two positions, first was talk about the grants manager. The grants manager is really as it states, we want to provide a role that will allow us to administer these funds properly and increase our current capacity within CDA for our grants management positions. Lastly, the program manager number two. This program manager will be housed in CDA and will assist in the management of the new programs, how and where we will, will be in conversations with. But this will again increase our capacity so that we can further implement our development activities by the development activities that remove barriers to affordable housing. And this request is around three million dollars to support these positions through the next five years.
Thanks, Dylan. And that grants manager and program manager to position, the grants manager will be responsible for the overall grant and executing the agreements with PDA and SLBC and managing reporting, whereas the program manager will really be focused on the historic housing grant program, the energy smart program vacant unit turns, site preparation fund and managing these operational programs. This is the last slide of our presentation and I won't go through every item. I'll just mention that our total request is ten million. We recognize that we may not be awarded the full amount, but it's better to set forth a bold vision and ask HUD to tell us which pieces of this they find most compelling. We also have a pretty extraordinary amount of leverage in terms of the city's commitment to housing justice and economic justice. When you zoom in on some of these specific line items, it's more limited, but we do believe that we will be able to hit the fifty percent match required for full points. But we're happy now to take any questions. We've gone over all these programs, so I'm not going to go through each one in detail. But we are here to take your questions and comments and I want to, one more time, thank Miriam and Dylan for their really thorough work and their leadership in putting this proposal together.
We'll be of two attendees, two of our colleagues. Any of the analysts or any of our colleagues have any questions? In the chat or raise your hand and I will. Anything I'd like to add or any closing remarks?
None on my part, Miriam or Dylan?
None for me. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone, Miriam. All right, I think we're good. Thank you, Tommy. I think we can wrap up this stream. We will be taking public comments and writing as well. So should anyone watch this online, you can submit your public comments at, what is the email address, Tommy?
We will take questions at CDA@ST.